Hello, good evening everyone. Welcome to the October 12th Board of Education Business Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion please to move into executive session?
So moved.
By Jen and a second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. We will be back shortly at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening everyone and welcome to the Webster Board of Education meeting this October 12th. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and before we continue can we have a motion to move out of executive session please?
So moved.
Linda and second by Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, moving on to our regular business, we have our liaison reports first. I know, do we have students?
I think so.
Thank you. Please come up.
I know I sound mic, there's Michael.
Hi, Michael. Welcome.
Hi, Michael and hi Brooke, how are you?
Hi, everyone.
Good.
Hi, thank you both.
Hi, everyone. I always do that. Hi, everyone. Michael and I are so excited to share our latest updates. The last few weeks have been so special considering that this homecoming was our first altogether again. We are so grateful for the staff members who help us throughout the year, but especially the ones who made the transition back to school as easy as possible. It's hard to believe we are already a month into the school year. Thirteen Way M News was kind enough to visit our school for our Friday night rival segment. On Friday, October 1st, Schrader had the opportunity to show off spirit. We all wore our jerseys for a pre-homecoming kickoff. Many students, including myself, were given the opportunity to be interviewed and share exciting information about events and clubs at our school. This past Saturday, many of our Warriors participated in Autumn Fan Fair held at Schrader. The Webster Marching Band performed their show Unbroken and scored so well that they are first in their state division. The marching band also held senior recognition and awards. The commitment these students and many of their families have for the marching band is very clear in their performance. The National Honor Society is working hard to get our student-run Tuennit Center up and running. This will be a great opportunity for students to help other students and build connections in our school community. Additionally, the National Honor Society is getting ready to offer other service projects such as a potential park cleanup in the near future.
Hi, everyone. So like Brooke said, homecoming week was in full swing this year at Schrader and it was so fantastic to see everyone dressed up again. We had karaoke in the cafeteria during lunch blocks, hall decorating after school, and it was finished with an awesome pep rally Friday. Everyone had so much fun the past five days and it was great to see everybody participating. Also during homecoming, we had the first bonfire at Schrader that we've had in quite some time and we had an absolutely massive turnout with almost 400 students coming to see the fire. Kona Ice also provided free snow cones to everyone and all around it was great to see everyone with their spirit and gear on. And then for a sports update, another highlight of the week is that we had a ton of super great sporting events. Our boys volleyball team beat Penfield in an awesome game that went into five full sets. Our cross-country team also had success this past weekend at a very large meet with many of our athletes even setting personal records for themselves. Our football team faced U-Prep on Friday for the homecoming game and we had many food trucks come out to the stadium and it was a huge turnout. Even though we lost, it was still great to see such amazing spirit in the fan section and we can't wait to present more news in the future next month. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you both so much, we appreciate hearing from you.
It was definitely a great week.
It was so, so fun.
I know. You're right, Brooke.
Thank you all.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Michael.
No, I don't think we do, so there's Joanie.
Hi, Joan, welcome.
Hello, you guys. Can I just pick one? I don't think I'm here tonight. I'll talk anyway.
Welcome Joan Bardanas on behalf of WTA.
Got some props. Won't be the last time. Dave, I heard 50 is a good number. We're in your last time.
That's good.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to be the liaison. You all know how I feel about this position and my colleagues. This evening, I told Michael and Brooke, they're amazing and I'm going to mention them again and they're already in my report because I knew they were going to mention homecoming and it was, it was fabulous. I also want to highlight our WTA coaches, school advisors, club advisors, and all those involved. Clubs intermurals and meetings with students, all those members continuing to help our students have opportunities. Opportunities to explore their interests. And when I sat down and I looked at things, there's over 100 hours each and every week, hundreds of hours. Throughout all 11 schools where kids have opportunities to stay for extracurricular activities. That's pretty amazing and the homecoming, wow. Whether it's the coordination of all the schedules, working together, the behind the scenes that goes into it from students, teachers, administrators, everybody makes that a blast. And it's not always smooth and it's sometimes messy in areas and we forge through it because we teach perseverance as well. A number that also falls in the hundreds was the number of teachers, students, all our members that participated and encouraged that participation in our homecoming activities. At our elementary levels, members like Elena and Candace continue to promote communities and classrooms. It's evidence, people see it, they see it when you walk in, whether it's academics or the soft skills. People feel that care works. They execute it beautifully. Our WTA members continue to create those classrooms where student voice is valued and a sense of community honored. Learning new things, new tools, those are things that have been happening in Webster for decades. We all know that and Sander Prey is a model of this. This year she was doing some things with the ecological field trip, ordering live aquatic, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that on tape or not. Live aquatic specimens and little critters for all those science kits and working with not only the students but other staff to feel comfortable in teaching. The connections our remote teachers made last year, so valuable. We all know that, but helping those students who were remote, who haven't been in school for two years, get back into school. Those connections from those WTA members is invaluable. It's priceless. Learning is important and as we go along the way and on this path of getting everybody back in school and we're there, we're still reminding people that it's been a while since we've been in school and sometimes we have to relearn things. We have to relearn what it's like to be in 20 to 30 people, five days a week, six hours a day. And people sometimes step back and need to reteach that over and over again so we can all get there. Our kids need it, our staff needs it. And then there's a little sense of normalcy. Not only homecoming, but our career and guidance members, guidance counselors were able to host our college nights, not only for our seniors but for our juniors. Not only was the searching and the application night available, but they were also able to host a financial aid night, which we all know is incredibly important. Okay, our teachers like Lauren Pergano and Jean Norris continue, they continue to step completely beyond the classroom and help our staff and help our students. Our strong partnership with our PTSA, wow. Our member liaisons at all schools including Denise Warner, Heidi Wojcze, they're in full swing trying to get everybody recruited and encouraged to be members. And partake in a lot of the fundraising going on, we have a coat fundraiser going on right now. Our women's committee, their book studies, their discussing of tough issues and their helping members balance, balance that home, that family, that career, our world. We're all in it. Our new WTA members include the whole spectrum. We have new people in the mental health department, schooling, school career and guidance, school psychologists, social workers, nurses, OTs, PTS. You guys noted, you approved all of it. You add to occupational PT, TOSSIS, speech and language, and we're all working together. We're over 800 strong as a WTA. Lastly, it's October. We started off with a fundraiser our kids were doing to help Miracle Field. We had a strategically bid on items so we can have artwork that was not only made from our students but giving back to our students. It hangs all over this district. Whether strategically placing those bids or joining team of a stride walk donating towards the weller members near and dear Balfour Bucks. Research or collecting purses with, and coats with our PTSA, WTA is busy. We're busy in and out of the classroom. Our heart and soul are in it, we're working together and it's an honor to be a member. I wish you all happiness and peace.
Thanks, Joanie.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate hearing from you.
Now because that is a 50 K per bar, does that go to Dave, is that what you said?
He's allergic.
Oh, that's right.
I promised to let us give it back.
Thanks again. And we have waiting in the wings over here, Jamie from Central PTSA. Thank you for being here as well. Thank you, Jamie.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jamie Ritchie and I'm the president of Webster Central PTSA. We are very excited for what this year has to offer. We actually just had our first meeting last Thursday and it was, it was exciting and we're excited to be back in school and to be able to start running our programs and events for everyone again. So we wanted to just say thank you for all of the hard work that our district has done to make that happen for our students. This year, we're really excited for the focus and commitment to provide opportunities to really pull together our parents, our teachers, our students, our administration, and our community. One of the things that we're going to be working on is really having all of the meetings be purposeful. So what we mean by that is including guest speakers and education for the parents, the students, the teachers, the community members that are important to you all, right, to people listening. What you need to hear, what you need to be educated on. So we're asking for feedback on what that looks like and we'll be starting that at our next meeting November 4th. We're working right now on finalizing who that guest speaker will be. We're also going to be implementing this into the buildings as well, that they have the opportunity to bring guest speakers in for part of their PTSA meetings on topics that are important to their parents and their students of that building because each building may differ. With PTSA, you're welcome to attend any of the meetings at any of the buildings so you may find that one of the buildings has something, a topic that you're interested in and you can listen in on that meeting for that, for that topic. We're excited for the opportunities for our school district and our community to collaborate together. So I wanted to share just a couple of things that are going to be coming up here in the next few months. The first one is a collaboration with Webster Parks and Recs. We're going to be, I'm sorry, with WTA, we're going to be doing a concert apparel and coat event from now until October 23rd. So that's a collaboration again with Webster Teacher Association and PTSA. The second one is going to be World Kindness Day that will be occurring throughout all the schools on November 12th. That's a district-wide collaboration. Third is going to be a collaboration with the Webster Bid, which is the Webster Business Improvement District. We've been asked to oversee Santa's Workshop, which will occur during the Holiday Parade of Lights, for those of you that aren't familiar. So PTSA will be sending out some notices letting people know that we're looking for people to sign up to help with all aspects of creating this magical winter wonderland that we're going to be doing outside this year in the interest of safety. And then also with the Webster Holiday Parade of Lights, we're going to be collaborating with our district on actually being part of that parade, so having floats. And we're excited and eager to reach out to families to see what these things will look like, working with our diversity and inclusion to really show the culture of Webster and all that it has to offer. Lastly, we just encourage everyone to become a member of PTSA. We really want to focus on our students this year, getting our students up in speaking at these different PTSA meetings and events so that they are included. So students can join PTSA along with their parents or caregivers and family members as well along with our community. So anyone that is not a member or is interested in learning more about the events, you can visit websterpts.org. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie, thank you for being here. And I believe that concludes our liaison reports. We'd like to take a moment this evening to recognize a few individuals and their contributions to our district. Jacqueline Goodwine, Assistant Principal at Schrader High School, and Blaine Cunningham, Manager of Buildings and Grounds, have both been recognized by SAENES, which is the School Administrators Association of New York. Mrs. Goodwine has received the High School Administrator of the Year Award. Jacqueline, are you here? And Mr. Cunningham has received the Essential Services Leader of the Year Award. And you're here, thank you so much. These individuals were nominated by their colleagues to recognize their leadership in support of the students and our community. So it's a highly esteemed award. Many congratulations to you both and thank you on behalf of the entire board for everything that you bring to our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much. I would just, I would just add that these are two leaders among leaders and we usually have a ceremony in April that celebrates them, but because of COVID we weren't able to have that. But we did do a little celebration here in the district this summer. But again, both Jackie and Blaine, well deserved. You guys were nominated by your colleagues and so proud of you. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening. Also, we would like to recognize Cheryl Cox Poole for her dedication to the Urban Suburban Program. And Cheryl, I saw you earlier. Thank you so much for being here. You can come up, please do. I'll talk while you're walking. Each year, the board is invited over the summer to meet and welcome the new students to the Urban Suburban Program. Cheryl's dedication and commitment to this program is unmatched. You were kind enough to recognize us with a certificate of appreciation in a pin, but I think it is us who should recognize you. We hope all of the students and their families are off to a good start. And it is, it is just such a wonderful event to be there in person and, and they're, they're receive speeches and goodie bags and tour buses and, and are just welcomed by all the principals at each school where the students are attending. So your efforts behind that are tremendous and we thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Cheryl, and thank you for all you do together. We are one family and one team. That was something that you and I had lots of conversations about this summer and so we just appreciate you very much, all you do for kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And moving on to our instructional reports. First, we have the interim superintendent's report along with campus news.
All right, thank you, Tammy. I'm waiting just for a second because I think Craig and Craig Bodensteiner are principal at Plank Road North Elementary. Chris Callahan is our OWL Administrator here at Willink, the middle school OWL program. They're going to be joining here in just a second, but I'm going to start. And it's my honor tonight to, to acknowledge all of our Board of Education members and all that they do and being such an important part of our one Webster team. Next week, school districts throughout the state celebrate Board of Education Recognition Week. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our seven board members for all that they do throughout the year for, for our students, our faculty, our staff, and our community. I've seen firsthand the time and commitment each of, each of you brings to this volunteer position. So I want to thank President Tammy Gerauski, Vice President Janice Richardson, Board Member Mike Alt, Board Member Jennifer Birdsong Ying, Board Member Linda DiAgardie, Board Member Shannon Ladelfa, and Board Member Maria Rijillo. I wanted to give you, and you know what, before we go too much further, how about a round of applause for our board? I'm just going to take and give you a snapshot here of some of the things that our Board of Education does and I know it was, it's a challenge to capture everything that they do, but here's just a little, here's a few pieces anyways. Board members are the governing body of the school district and they're elected by and represent the Webster community. They attend governance and finance training and they are incredibly important to all of our standing committees of audit, policy, budget advisory, strategic planning, legislative, labor relations, and information exchange, just to name a few. Also, they're liaisons to all, all of our buildings and all of our PTSAs in each of our buildings as well. They're highly engaged and active members of our community and they're committed to volunteerism and so many of them have been longtime members of our school, community, and organizations. So again, my hat goes off to all of you and I know I represent the entire district when we say thank you for, for all the time and the effort that you guys put in. Thank you guys very much. All right, and next up we have campus news. And I'm going to now turn it over to Craig to get us started as our elementary. Tell us a little bit about what's going on in elementary.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, board members, senior leadership, and the Webster community and friends. On behalf of the Severn Elementary buildings, I'm going to break this evening's session into three parts and the first and foremost is gratitude. Hard to believe that the calendar has flipped over to October, but the appreciation to our unsung heroes, our transportation department, our kitchen and cook managers that have worked effortlessly to allow us to remain open and currently having just a tremendous school year. We are also very grateful to our parents and families, grandparents and uncles that are being patient with us as we work out arrival and dismissal and some of the beautiness of opening up a new school year under uncharted times. So we are so very, very grateful. We are grateful for our teachers who are the backbone of our schools and providing the TLC for our students and welcoming them back. And it's just been a great beginning of the school year, so thank you to everyone for making that becoming reality. The second part was, or is, a few years ago we had a capital project and sometimes when the community votes on a capital project, you don't get to see the fruits and fruition of those things kind of quote unquote paying off literally and figuratively. So some of the slides that you're going to share, currently right now we're looking at Clemnards Playground, all right, and the kids having fun with that. Clem South had a PTSA sponsored event, it was great seeing the kids run out and about. A beautiful library at Plank South, I believe DeWitt's Library is also finished up. I encourage you again, I know it's hard with the buildings, but take, ask your teachers for pictures of them and things like that, but they are modern, state art of the facilities. I know we are all looking forward to getting our kids into them. State Road had what's called a party on the playground a few weeks ago, so you can see the smiles on the faces and the parents being reconnected again. DeWitt, their stairs leading up, right up to the second floor going up to the library and some of those character traits and essential skills that you see embedded going up in stairs, a daily reminder. Schlegel's Playground, as you can see, is a work in progress right now, but even the beauty of that, the kids got to go out and see the construction workers. We're grateful our teachers sometimes had to shut those blinds because the noise and the visual is a little bit of distraction for our friends, but you can see the excitement that's building up with our kids there. And the last thing, my wife tells me all the time, no one wants to hear you talk. So which better customers to have our student voice talk? And I'm very appreciative of Paul Conley who came over a couple of weeks ago. What you're about to watch is a video from UPK all the way up to fifth grade. We interviewed two kids at each grade level and we gave them various prompts and instead of hearing it from the adults, our best customers that we're all here for are for our students and here they are.
I'm going on the playground.
Playing on the playground.
I'm going on the gym and I'm playing on the playground.
Eating lunch.
I turned right at my gym teacher when she said freeze and she gave me a sticker.
Today, in the morning, I was listening what the teacher told me to do and I got a care coupon, it's my sixth one. And it made me really proud of myself.
A closed syllable is, um, the consonant closes in the vowel. I've learned that, um, you, so you get the bigger number, put it down lower to show your work, then do the ten sticks to show your work. Then draw circles, mouth counters, then get your ten with every number you have and then.
Then count, count the other side of the ten stick to see what you have and if it's, and it'll be a teen, but, or it might be in the twenties. If it's a lot, it circles you have to write.
Somebody left the door open for me so I could go to the bathroom and that made my day today.
My pencil box spilled and all my crayons and pencils and my glue stick fell out and they helped me clean it up.
Well, yesterday my friend, um, like a charm fell off of her necklace, so I offered to help put it back on.
My teacher, Mr. Darling, he helped me refresh my memory on learning rounding in math and my, from last year and the year before. And now he's making it really easy to learn new units in math and, um, he's making the math fun and, but we're actually learning, we're having fun.
I didn't know how to get an instrument, so I asked my teacher and he gave me the sheet on how to get an instrument.
Math class. Today we learned how to add equivalent fractions and how to change the denominator. At first, I'd used my brain really hard because it was hard at first and then as I started using my brain more, it got way easier. And after Ms. Napolitano was explaining all the stuff, I found it way more easier.
And this guy's outie. Bye-bye.
So a quick programming note on that, not only did we make some of those kids promise that they need to remember who their elementary school principal when they're receiving their first Oscar Award.
Yeah, right.
As you can see the talent that we have there and with Mr. Conley as my witness, every one of those kiddos from UPK up to fifth grade did that on one take. The only thing that was added is Mr. Bacallies, that was a part of his spiel, we put that at the end of it. So on that note, again, as you can hear from our students themselves, how happy they are, how grateful they are, and a lot of it helped to do with what they're learning here in their heart and here is almost a secondary because of the love that they're feeling by being around their kids and teachers each and every day. And on that note, I'm going to turn it over to my good friend, Mr. Chris Call- And on that note, I'm going to turn it over to my good friend, Mr. Chris Callahan.
Thanks for that note, and a very tough act to follow. So good evening to the board, to the community in attendance, and to those tuning in from home. My name is Chris Callahan, and I have the great pleasure of being the Administrator of Webster CSD's newest program, Owl Metal. Can I just, going to list some help here. With the support of leadership and the board, we've been able to add the missing link to the Owl Continuum and keep more of our students where they belong, in their home district with their friends and neighbors. The addition of this program further increases our students' access to high-quality resources and the staff of the Webster CSD. The start of the school year has been nothing short of incredible. We have onboarded a team of talented educators and mental health staff who have embodied our vision of creating a culture where students feel like they belong and they have a trusted adult that they can confide in. The roots of our culture are watered daily in our community-building circle, where each morning we gather as a group and pass a talking piece that signals to all in attendance that each member of our program has their own life experiences and a voice. The ability to infuse in the Willink community has allowed our students to enjoy some of the time-honored traditions of being a middle school student: lockers, clubs, sports, and most importantly, Spirit Days. Academically, our students are making their way through Humanities and STEM courses and enjoying the Webster Encore opportunities of technology, health, phys ed, and art. If you take a look at the top-left picture there, we learned an awful lot about engineering through making paper airplanes. The paper airplanes made their way around the classrooms for the rest of the day. We made sure to carve out some time to enjoy our early success. After meeting our community PBIS school, we spent an afternoon at Wickham Farms picking apples, eating donuts, bouncing on the bounce pillow, and for some, getting buried in the corn acopia. I did not partake in that. The second step is getting the corn out of your pockets, your shoes, and your hair. One of our students shared the day's top quote, that this time was to be used just to be kids. October has brought many joys that are being experienced across all of our secondary buildings. Thanks to some creativity and sunshine, our high schools enjoyed the many traditions of Homecoming Week and added some new ones. The week's activities included hallway decorating, theme days, bonfires with shaved ice, and an outdoor homecoming dance. The week was capped off with two well-executed outdoor pep rallies, full of youthful exuberance and school spirit. I am sad to report that after an offseason of rigorous training, both of the faculty tug-worf teams were handily defeated by the students. Spry and Willink joined in the homecoming fun by holding Spirit Days of their own, including wearing school colors and pink, which symbolizes people in need of kindness. While this school year is far from normal, we are so grateful for the return to five days of learning and the ability for our students to enjoy their school traditions while making lasting memories. I speak for the secondary administrators when I say we'd like to thank the board, Mr. Neenan, and the senior, rest of the senior leadership team for supporting the reopening and stay-opening efforts that have allowed us to have a fantastic start under these given conditions. Thank you.
Thank you both, Chris and Craig, for being here tonight and for your leadership and giving us a window into both the elementary and the secondary lens. That was fantastic. Appreciate that, and certainly appreciate in a future hearing from other district leaders as well. So this has been a great addition, and I really appreciate that. Lastly, hold on just a second, and then we'll let you go here. I just, lastly, a quick reminder for our elementary school families, parent-teacher conferences for UPK V students will be here soon, on Thursday, October 21st, and Friday, October 22nd, and also the following week, on Thursday, October 28th and Friday, October 29th, parent-teacher conferences will be held at all seven elementary buildings, which means a half-a-day schedule for those students. Students in grades six through 12, remember, they are full, full-day schedule, normal schedule. And elementary parents, please watch for news from your principal for the bus schedule for those four days in October that I just mentioned, and I hope all, I hope you all have an enjoyable, productive conference with your students' teachers. And like both Chris and Craig said, I'm so proud of the work of our students and the work that they've been doing, and our teachers and our staff, and everybody included in our entire district. I can't thank the parents and teachers and staff enough for everything they're doing to make sure that we stay open five days a week, like Chris just said. I appreciate that. So, and that ends my report for the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you guys.
Please thank the students on our behalf, too, for the terrific job. Thank you. And moving on in our instructional reports, we have a presentation, Evolving Technology. We have Brian Zimmer and Joe Montamaro, possibly.
Board members and community members, on behalf of the technology team, Joe and myself, we're excited to present where Webster has really, really moved the technology needle since 2014. What we wanted to do tonight is to share with you how we were able to make it through the pandemic so far really, really well, and how we're moving forward in order to enhance what we do instructionally and operationally throughout the entire district. So the first slide that we're going to look at tonight, the roadmap that Paul will display in one second, really defines, you know, where we've come since 2014. In 2014, I got called into Mr. Freeman's office, scared out of my mind thinking of my first few months of employment, his first few months, that I'd be looking for a new job, but it was quite different. You know, Brian and I sat down and said, what can we do together as a team to really start to move Webster to be the top of technology throughout New York State? Since 2014, we've not only implemented a one-to-one, we've changed email systems, we've also added a zone-copier approach to save money for the district, and we've looked towards efficiencies in order to provide the best opportunities possible for all of our Webster students, no matter what program that they were in. So I'm very excited on behalf of our team and Joe, that we've been able to really push the needle for what the school district and for all of our kids and staff in order to provide the best experiences for our kids since 2014 in order to help instructionally move us in a good direction. One of the ways that we've really prepared ourselves for the pandemic, and we were a very fortunate school district, is we've always maintained the focus on instructional practices. One of the things as a team that we've always said is that we don't want the work that we're doing to be about technology. If we're doing it about, if we're focusing on technology, then it's the wrong work. The work has to be on what we're doing in the classroom for our kids on a day-to-day basis, from the teacher level to all of our support staff, to all of the different groups that really impact what instructionally happens in the district. The other thing that we've been focused on is consistent and equitable access for all of our students. As a former assistant principal, former music teacher in the district, my goal has always been about the kids and always about the colleagues. If we can't provide the best for our kids, then I strongly feel that we're missing the boat, and I know that Joe feels the exact same way. So one of the things that we've been striving for is, no matter what classroom you go into, you're going to see the same opportunity and same experiences for the kids and for the teachers. That starts with the laptops, that starts with the Dell boards, that also starts with the one-to-one approach that we've done for all of our kids. What's exciting and also crazy in the same breath is we're coming up on our third replacement of the student devices since 2014. I never thought that it would go this quickly. It's exciting, it's also nerve-wracking when we think that we're going to be deploying this summer over 8,400 devices. And I couldn't do the work without our tech team, without our student workers that help, and also our summer workers that make that a really beneficial process. One of the things that's been extremely beneficial, working with the board and working with Brian Freeman, is our program through BOSI that allows us to lease the devices and all the materials that we buy in order to sustain this program. It really makes it a financially sustainable program that we do year after year that has had great leaps and bounds for us when looking at providing the best technology for our kids. So it's exciting, we're getting ready to hold our meeting with BOSI's coming up soon, because one of the things that we're all worried about is the supply and chain demand issue that we might be running short of getting devices. Luckily, Dell in our conversation last week has confirmed and reaffirmed that they're going to be able to get the devices we need, but we still want to do it early enough so we can make sure we have what we need to start August and hit the ground running to get all of the devices out to our kiddos next summer. So student devices, just to go a little bit more. So in 2019, at our list, current iteration of the devices, we switched to a touchscreen device based on the recommendation of our students. We've been working with our WTI program, which is Webster Technical Internship Program at the high schools and middle schools. They're really driving the bus on what technology we should be using with our kids. It's really exciting because they're, the students are fixing the devices, they're maintaining the devices, they're our frontrunners as far as being the liaisons to making sure that our program goes extremely well. We couldn't do this program if we didn't have roughly those 50 to 60 kids that are giving time during their day in order to support this program. Last year, we did really well, but one of the things that we missed was our kids being there on a day-to-day basis in order to support and enhance this program. We're excited to share that the kids are coming back in full force, they're doing a lot of great work, and it's been really, really awesome. This summer, we had a group of kids that was working for us, that was able to start looking at what Chromebook we want to go with in the future. We're going to get some additional devices in for them to put through the paces, including throwing on the ground, stepping on it, you know, making sure that they're kid-proof. That's one of the things that we looked at in 2014, is selling our program that these devices are going to hold up. They've been holding up really well, considering we had them in the hands of third through 12th graders going home since April of 2019. So I'm really excited about that. As a district, through feedback with our teachers and with our staff, for K through 2, we're going to continue to use iPads at that level, based on some survey data we did at the end of last year. That's very exciting. And one of the things as a district that we've moved forward with that's been beneficial is that we allow all devices to go home K through 12. Through the K through 5 level, we're letting teachers and students make the decision if they want to send them home, but they're available to go home at any point for our families to use, as well as our kiddos to further their instruction beyond the school day. Very, very exciting times for us. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Joe, he's going to be joining us remotely. We're going to show you a little video that he put together since he was unable to be with us this evening.
Good evening, Board of Education members. I apologize for not being able to be there in person this evening, but it is somewhat apropos that I am able to use technology to present on our technology presentation this evening. I'm going to dovetail into the presentation that Brian Zimmer has already started, and I'm going to start with looking at some of our instructional tools. As you can see on the screen, we have a Word Cloud that has a smattering of all of the instructional tools that we have been able to use over the last few years, as well as some new ones that we have brought on during this last year of the pandemic. Last year, at the Board of Education meeting, we were able to highlight a few tools for you, Google Classroom and Seesaw as our main learning management systems, and this year, we're going to highlight some of the things that we were able to bring on to help with instruction during the last year. The first tool that I would like to highlight is NearPod. We brought on NearPod as a lesson platform for our instructors last year to help with the connection for both virtual and hybrid and in-person learning. The NearPod system gives the instructor the ability to both develop a lesson for synchronous and asynchronous instruction, and the instructor has control over the timing of the lesson when they're in person, or to choose that it can be a student-paced lesson for that asynchronous instruction. The controls built into the NearPod system also allow for built-in checks for understanding so that our teachers can have formative assessments, quizzes, and other forms of feedback within those lessons, so that they can see where students are in that instruction and also circle back with those students, whether they are in person or have completed the student-paced asynchronous instruction, and be able to target things that they need to communicate back to the students so that we know that they have met the standards of the lesson. The other ability that NearPod gave us last year was the ability to have an attendance record so that during the asynchronous instruction time, or asynchronous lessons, the teacher was able to see who was able to complete the lesson and who wasn't able to complete the lesson, and then be able to communicate directly with that student and the family regarding the lesson that they missed or the difficulty that they had. NearPod also gave teachers the flexibility, and still does this year, to have the teacher-paced lesson or the student-paced lesson. This evolution moving forward allows for any students who are absent to also have access to a lesson that they can self-paste themselves through so that they do not miss the instruction, but are able to access the content even if they are absent or quarantined at home. The next evolution of this product for us is the development of a professional development library. What we learned during the pandemic is that we won't always be able to provide in-person professional development, and that our staff also needs some flexibility to be able to have on-demand professional development at a time that is flexible and needed for them. This year, we used some of our tech innovators, our teachers who are very good with products, to develop lessons for our new teacher orientation around products that we have, such as Google Classroom, Seesaw, and other products. This meant that our new teachers were able to access this professional development on their own time and then be ready to hit the classroom the first day that they came to work and feel prepared in the products that we are using. Throughout this development of this professional development library, we are also targeting different groups and trying to use it inside of our system to help staff understand some of the knowledge and the things that we are trying to connect with each other on. We have used it through our lead teacher meetings and also with our department standards work to make sure that everyone has the same knowledge base, and they can also go back and reference these materials anytime that they need. The future of this professional development library will be to target professional developments for specific groups, like PLCs, departments, or grade levels that have specific needs, and create materials that can be referenced in this professional development library as they continue their work throughout the year. The next product I'd like to highlight is iXL. We brought on the iXL program to help support our math and ELA departments from grades six through 12 last year as we went through the pandemic, and also this year as we move forward to connect students with resources. This product has a real-time diagnostic that students can take and that will tell us where they are in alignment with the skills and standards according to the New York State-aligned curriculum. This helps teachers target areas that they need to help support students in, as well as understand where they need to reinforce certain standards and skills that may have been missed. The product has a personalized guidance that will help students when they struggle. It will give them reference materials and also explain the why of a skill or a standard that they may not be up to speed on. As you can see to the right of the image, we have actionable analytics. You can see through the first 15 days of school that our students have answered over 220,000 questions in the iXL system. They're using the system both at school and at home, and then we can also target the levels of mastery to see where students fall in the standards and the skills as we move forward. One of our goals for this year is to use the system to help with our response to intervention throughout six through 12 and be able to help students gain those targeted skills as they move through the system. Lastly, I'll speak to you about digital citizenship. Our Digital Citizenship Committee will be reconvening at the end of October of this year. We will reinvigorate our connection with common sense education and the lessons and the professional development that we have for our teachers and embedding them through our K-12 system. We will again continue to refine and redevelop our community outreach and information that we are able to put out to our community. We will be looking to put on a parent-university-type presentation for our community later this year around digital citizenship and technology use. And then our long-range goal will be to integrate the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. These standards were released by New York State in December of 2020, right before the pandemic, and we are charged with implementing them K-12 before the year 2024. Our charge for this committee will be able to look at these standards and understand that they are supposed to be integrated and not just a standalone set of standards. We will need to be able to be cognizant of integrating them with all of the standards work that is currently being done in the district, as well as partnering to make sure that they align with the SEL and the MTSS work that we do from a mental health standpoint so that we are attending to the whole child and not just a standalone system of digital components. With that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, and I will turn it over to Brian Zimmer.
Okay, so-
Okay, so one of the things that's been exciting for us since we started this back in 2014 is we really had the mindset that we're, we want to prepare kids and our staff for opportunities that don't even exist yet. So as we've evolved since 2014, we've really been focusing on that mantra to really help us move forward and really make the best decisions for our kids and for our staff. One of the things that we try to do is we make sure we're mindful about what's best for our, for the overall approach for the district. So because of all the work we've done up to this point, we've really been able to start to look at how do we continue to move forward? While other districts right now are figuring out, how do they get more devices? How do they provide the opportunities for kids that we've been, we've placed ourselves well for based on your support and based on the support of all of the different levels throughout the district? So instructionally, you know, like we talked about, we're excited because we get to replace our devices every three years. We're trying to provide the best opportunity and the best equipment for our kids, our staff, all the time. One of the things that's moving now into our classrooms, which has been really exciting, is augmented reality, where we might take a lesson on a motor of a car, and now we get to use the computer technology in order to see what's inside the motor, rather than taking apart a motor, taking the time. We can go and start to pinpoint, pinpoint diagnostically what's inside that motor, all the different things that we need to do to replace it, to make it functional and be able to make it work. For the last several years, we've had Google Glasses that's really helped us get to the virtual reality pieces of education. Unfortunately, due to COVID, those have been sort of on the back burner right now while we, while we continue to wait, wait through the COVID period, but we're hoping to get those three kits out really, really soon. As Joe talked, it's been a really strong focus on our software enhancements here on a day-to-day basis to make sure that we have the right software in the kids' hands in order to support instruction, to continue to go back to that instructional focus. The other exciting piece that we've been focusing on is a virtual desktop for all students to access any software for technology, art, music, business, from any device throughout the world. This virtual desktop allows our students to connect on their Chromebooks, to access some of the high-end technology programs like Computer Aided Design, also known as CAD, some of the Autodesk materials, Finale for Music, and they don't even have to be on our devices, or on our devices. They can be on their phone, they can do it from their Chromebook and access these high-powered programs in order, in order to continue their learning beyond the normal seven to four or eight to four school day. Very, very excited. We have a lot of kids that take advantage of that and are using that to extend their learning. So instructionally, this is one of the, one of the augmented realities that we're using. It's called Gizmos. With Gizmos, this allows for, this exact one is on dissection of a frog. So instead of bringing frogs in to dissect them, the students go through the experience doing it electronically. The students can work at their own pace, they can make decisions about the next appropriate steps, as well as document what their work is right while they're, while they're maintaining the program. The, the program also gives them feedback as they go, and it also gives the teachers feedback on how the students are doing as they progress along through the overall dissection. This is one of the many, many Gizmos that we've used. Our, our teachers are using this quite frequently in order to support instruction, because as we know, some of the materials are not readily available, and so this allows them to have that live experience like we did back in, back in our day. Also, instructionally, one of the things that we're looking at based on feedback from our staff, based on, you know, what we learned through COVID, is adding the potential of instructional coaches at the secondary level to really support what's happening in the classrooms. You know, between Joe and I, we're, we're in classrooms all the time, working with our staff. We know that sometimes the more on-demand support is needed in order to help teachers directly, in order to support what they're trying to do. So we're working with the administrative team to figure out our potential for that. This has also been something that's been on our technology committee plan since 2014. We're just looking to see how we can possibly evolve that as we continue to move forward. And also, we're, we're continuing to look at how we can expand on our augmented and virtual reality experiences for all of our grade levels. There are some really great opportunities, great field trips, since not all of our kiddos can get out to, say, visit Washington DC, where we can use those experiences to make sure that the, the playing field has become level for any of our children, no matter what, what opportunity evolves. Cybersecurity. I've talked to you guys ad nauseam about this for the last few years. As you know, we're following New York State Education Law 2D. Over the last few years, we've taken several steps with a company out of Buffalo called Sadara. They are working on a day-to-day basis, 24 hours by seven days a week, in order to make sure that our footprint for cybersecurity is extremely secure. They monitor our network traffic, they're doing all of our virtual work to really reduce our risk profile, to make sure that we try to do our best to not have a cybersecurity incident. We're working with them right now to review our internal practices and protocols, and really helping us enhance what we do on a day-to-day basis to really think about our efficiency overall. We also started this year a program, using a program called KnowBefore. We're using that to test our cybersecurity practices right now. We've done it with our administrators to, through phishing campaigns and other different types of approaches. So far, we've done extremely well with those results. We're actually well below industry standard, which I'm excited to report on. We're going to continue to increase the overall hardness of these tests that we've been sending out, but our, our administrators so far have done well, and we're looking at how we can expand that to our full system within the next year. But it's exciting times, and it's been fun to watch. We've, most recent, we sent out a phishing attack that came from Panera Bread, and we had no one click on it. So out of 105 recipients, we actually did really well, and I'm, I'm very excited on that based on the training we've done up to this point. So that's, that's going well, but one of the things that we constantly do is we're constantly vetting software. As we know, we're required to do that, and so that's been some of our really great work lately that's been, you know, taking a little bit of time. Some of the other sides, on the operation side of the things that are coming, is we're in the process, between Neil Flood and myself, on the state of the, or introducing the new radio system that will help for transportation and safety and security. We're excited to share that, you know, we're, we're in some final stages on some decision-making where we're, we're getting ready to order the radios. We're hoping to start the implementation over Christmas break, move into doing that work February, March, and working in February to get all the buses set with that, with the new state-of-the-art system. Based on the work with the company, we think it's going to happen pretty quickly, but as we know, based on, you know, supply and demand, that, that might be the only holdup to this point, but we're, we're excited about that progressing. Also this summer, one of the things that we moved into is track, tracking all of our vehicles, our buses, and all of our district vehicles, with the intentions that we can move to a parent app in the 22, 23 school year, where we can track where the buses are. So if I wanted to see where Bus 114 is to pick up my kids, I can see, you know, how far they're out, you know, when they open the door. There's a possibility that we'll be able to see, you know, all of those stops and knowing, you know, if my bus was late, our bus is going to be on time, so we're excited that that's coming. We're also working on Wi-Fi in the buses. We know that there are some, you know, there's some great opportunity when kids are traveling to different after-school events, traveling to sporting events, where we want our kids to, you know, jump on and do some homework, or stay caught up on school, or get ready for what's coming the next day. So as part of our bus replacement plan, we're working on adding Wi-Fi going forward. One of the things that's also going to happen going forward with that is in one to two years, we're hoping that we can tie our camera system in so we can see that in live time for, you know, security of the drivers, as well as security and safety of the overall kids. And then as far as food service, we're looking to increase our fleet there with new, new computers, with some credit card readers and some enhanced capabilities to keep what they're doing even more secure in order to provide the grade level and high level of service that they continue to offer on a day-to-day basis. So with that, I know we went through a lot in a very, very short time, but on, on behalf of the technology team, we wanted to thank you for allowing us to present, to show and showcase the work that we've been doing, not only for the last seven years, but really from COVID on. It's, you know, it's been a lot of great work. We, we have a lot of great support because of all, of all of you, and, you know, we can't, we can't do this work without you, so we wanted to thank you. And we'll turn it over for some questions.
Yes, thank you, and thank you to Joe for being here virtually. Worked out well. Should we start? Does anybody have a question or comment? Do you want to? Mike, start over. Please go ahead.
Hi, Brian. Nice job.
Thanks, Mike.
So as we start moving more and more to digital, and we're pretty far along, particularly as you start adding credit cards, are you comfortable with our security to protect the unauthorized access of the data, the release, the hacking of the data? And if not, you know, is there anything you need from the district that you're not getting?
So, great question. I, I feel very confident that we are in a great position so far for a district because of the work we've done with Sadara since, for almost the last two years now. They are constantly monitoring data through many different approaches. We're constantly reviewing that data, as well as we're also getting to a point where we're training our staff. We know that a cybersecurity incident most likely is going to happen. You know, the, the industry standard prediction right now is 95% of a cybersecurity attack is going to happen from internal, from somebody clicking on a phishing link or somebody doing something that exposes us. So what we're doing, based on the training piece, is really the main focus. Our equipment on the, on the outside is, is really, really strong. We're getting alerts probably three to four times a day of, you know, changes that are happening within our system that could potentially expose that. We're also taking some, some steps right now to enhance our servers and our backups as well. So I feel really confident in it. I, I still lose a lot of sleep, and I've lost the remaining part of my hair based on cybersecurity. But overall, right now, I think we're in a really great place, and, you know, we're just, for me, I'm just constantly trying to figure out how we can move it forward, and it's using those outside resources. You know, a team right now of seven technicians, we had to look outside and really ask for the help, and that's where Sadara is, the experts in this field. They work with companies throughout the world, and they're just, they've become a partner with us and a, and a very strong collaborator, really focusing on making sure Webster is safe. Because the last thing I want to do right now is call Brian or any of you and say, "Brian, we've had an incident, we need, I need some help," and here are some of the steps. I don't want to call and say, "We're going to be down for, we're, we're not going to have phones for two weeks," and we've seen that in local news. So we're working really hard to make sure that we're doing all the right steps in order to protect that, and constantly making sure we're upgrading all the time.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maria, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't really think you can necessarily answer my question right now, but I was excited to hear about the instructional coaches. It is something that we've heard in the past that is a need, and someone who personally struggles to learn new technology, I think that'll be a good thing, so I look forward to hearing about how we can implement that in the future.
Great.
Is that for teachers to be, the question that you were just talking about? So it's to teach them how to use different parts of technology?
Yeah, or when they, when they get stuck. So I'm, I'm trying something new in my classroom, or I've tried something and I, and I need some different ideas. To have those live time and on-demand resources is what our overall approach is. We, right now, our elementary TOCs do a lot of that work with our, with our staff on a day-to-day basis. We're just looking at how we enhance it and evolve that going forward with the secondary levels, six through 12.
Okay. And I do want to make a comment on the bus GPS and tracking. As a parent, even as a board member, I think that will greatly improve the quality of lives for many parents, especially in the winter, when you have little kids who have to go out. It is a constant battle. I know the bus drivers have to deal with kids running at the last minute because they saw the bus, and now they're trying to catch up. So I really, I love to see our district going there. I've seen it implemented in other districts, and it's been great, so I'm really glad to see that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Safety and security exercise, that, that idea came out of, of a bus that was out of Radio Shot that was on an athletics trip. We did it as a, a safety and security drill of how we would respond, and the overwhelming of not knowing where that bus was led us to, that's a hole in our planning, and we got to address it. And so we've been shopping vendors for years on who has the technology, and we finally found one that could do that and pinpoint it for us.
I just have one quick question about the, the new computers for the food service. How might the state maintaining the free, free lunch program affect the need for those machines? Because, I mean, is it for staff to buy lunch? Is it for students, or both?
So there's always going to be à la carte. That's not going away.
Okay.
So it's just, we're responding to the ever-changing dynamic of students having digital currency access. So, you know, the Gatorade that's not part of the free meal that they want at the high school level, that, you know, don't have the preloaded through My School Box, being able to, to offer different options.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Thank you. From the bottom of my heart, you have always been so student-centered, and you think outside of the box constantly, and for that, I think the district is grateful for you and for Joe. It's great, a couple of years ago, when we had our first Chromebooks, and then going to the students and asking them, and hearing their feedback and how much they loved the touch, the touchscreen and how easy that was, and also for, for teachers, because it could lay flat and do more presenting. So I thank you, and for helping all of us who are not proficient in technology. Your patience is so greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It sounds like it's important to try to understand where children are with a possible learning gap, like from where they were last year to where they, because that's been one of my questions, is how are they going to be able to determine where kids are and what we need to do to help catch them up if they are, they do need catch-up in some areas? So this sounds like a really good tool to help teachers with that, which is...
Yeah, one of, one of the great things about the tools that we've selected is it's a focus on the data piece as well, because we need to know where they're, where they were and where they're going. And if we don't use the data to inform our instructions, then we're, then we're just making ill-informed instructional decisions going forward. So with iXL, it'll, it can give the teacher daily printout or weekly printout of what they're, what the kid has done, as well as what their progress is, and, you know, where they fall along that, you know, the national standard benchmark, similar to NWA, where it'll say, here are the, the specific skills that we want the child to work on. It, it's a really powerful program, and it's, you know, from Joe's lens, it's come really far in order to help our math students grow, as well as overall approach.
Good, because that is definitely, there is a difference between teaching and proficiency, and that's something that with less time last year, that was a big concern for me, was we just didn't have that time to really be able to go into proficiency. So I'm happy that there's a tool there that helps teachers identify that, and it's not just relying on our, our state, you know, our typical state testing that we do. So I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just a big thank you to you all. We, I know Webster was way ahead of the curve years ago when we began the one-to-one initiative, and that is largely due to you gentlemen sitting here and the foresight of the technology team as a whole. So it made last year a bit easier than, than it was for other districts who weren't in that position. And then to this, this, last year also begged the question from all of us, with all the new technology and apps that were out there, what was really helpful and would stay and become part of curriculum, and what are the things that, that teachers kind of went back to in terms of in-person instruction? So thank you so much for all this information. We appreciate it, appreciate your time in pulling the presentation together, and we'll catch up with Joe.
Sounds good. Thanks very much.
Thank you. We do need a motion to approve this report.
So moved.
By Linda and a second. By Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks again. Moving on to board business, we have the summer, summer capital project review, and Mr. Freeman will walk us through that.
I've upgraded computers since last time. None of the pictures were done.
Forget about that.
All right, so I'm just going to take you through some of the summer work updates. It's been quite the busy summer from the capital project perspective. And first, I just want to give you an update on what happened at all the schools. So first up is Webster Schrader, really focused on the track and field aspect of what happened. We're almost 100% done. We're in the punch list phase, as we call it, tidying up some of the loose ends. Fencing has been the last really major thing around the track. That's, that's an area where we've seen delays on the product side of getting some fencing materials, some backlogs there, and also kind of a worker shortage with who was subcontracted out for that. So just finishing those things up, a couple other things. Unfortunately, we did have a measurement error, so the goalposts will have to be moved, and what's going to happen there is they're actually setting in a box in the ground. They need to order a new box system, so that's causing a little bit of a delay. So football would have, it has to be temporarily moved, but other sports are able to use it, like soccer. So that's what we're at right there, just now taking, now that we're living through it, or what are some things that we have to maybe adjust or do, possibly looking at some additional seating for, on the baseball side. So just trying to take some of those learnings now that we're into the space and make some minor adjustments. Thomas, you'd never thought it would be ready for the start of school with how it looked over the summer, especially with the parking lot, but it was a very, very busy summer there. The tech wing is at the punch list right now. Couple things here and there. things here and there. All the ceilings and lights were done throughout the building. Field, the lights went up at the end of the summer as well. They're really moving along on that. Let's keep the good weather going through the fall, because that will speed up the process there. Some site work still going on with the parking lot. We had an original traffic pattern, lived it for a couple weeks, and then have redesigned it. So you probably saw on the weekend, if you spend any time on publishers, some groups restriping to see if that would make an improvement. And I believe it has, if you have been over there around dismissal time. So that Thomas work is wrapping up as we speak. Schrader inside, it's a two-year project, really, for the amount of work at Schrader. Tremendous amount going on there. So half the bathrooms were tackled this summer. Majority of them were ready by the start of school, but there's still some work that needed to be done, finishing up now. All the office renovations, classroom renovations were getting done. Library is offline. Right, that is being worked on as we speak. And then the foundation repairs, I'll show you some that was pointed out in our 2015 BCS, backed by the athletic entrance, some brick work. You'll see, when I show you the pictures, I could elaborate that a little bit more. That corner was identified as part of our BCS needing remediation. So that was also completed within the first couple of weeks of school. And at the elementaries, or actually libraries, a big thing, were ahead of schedule on construction. One problem is, all the casework is behind schedule. So DeWitt got done first, and then moved over to Plank South. Plank South was about a month ahead on construction, but there was nothing to put in there because of the supply shortage on the ordering for bookcases and the casework to go in there. So we've solved that with some temporary, some stuff is starting to trickle in. Plank North, we're seeing the same thing, because we had ordered on a kind of revolving basis. So we're trying to speed up the ordering and put everything in storage for the next round. So when it gets done, and they're onto Clem North now. One other major delay on the elementaries, we were going to start more of the vestibule security work. But early on in the, actually almost spring, early summer, we realized we wouldn't get stuff in time to reopen those vestibules in time for school to start. So we kind of made the executive decision, let's do what we can, and we'll come back to them next year, when we know we'd have things. So like, we couldn't get carpet. We knew it would be close. We didn't want to take that chance. Some of the hardware would be problematic. We didn't want to take that chance. So we kind of did what we could, and are going to do the full boat next. We're hoping to break it up half and half. Full boat next summer. Playground's about 95% done throughout the district. Schlegel is the last one that is going through right now. That should be done by fall. And across the elementaries, we'll see Clem North, then State Road, and then Schlegel will be the last library as far as phasing goes. Including in my report to you is the phasing of every building. I've highlighted what is completed, and what is unhighlighted is still yet to be done. So you can see, there is a tremendous amount of work still to go as we go through this school year, and then in next summer as well. Like I said, transportation, I'll touch on in greater detail here in a moment. So this was probably the most interesting part. After the photos, we could take you through, just a little before and after, what Clem South looks like. And I'll tell you, the group, Game Time and Titan, really just hammer these out. And it's top-notch quality. And they're turning around so quick, the kids get to enjoy them right away. Doesn't take long once they get in there with their full teams. So Clem South's new spot is great. Plank South, they have some new pieces that have really separated out. Plank North, you see the before, up against, right up against the building, got themselves a new basketball court, and some new playground equipment back there. The DeWitt Library, a little before and a little after. See how that looks. The Thomas Pool, back open for swim lessons and for student use. What it looks like before really kind of gutted the original-looking pool, and created a new sports floor and cleaned it up. We still have the original 1964 scoreboard up there. We took that down. We have ordered a new one for that area for a time clock. The tech wing renovations, a couple looks there. And then the track, she hasn't had too many ducks land on it yet for that blue color. But just the envy, I think, of a lot of districts right now, when they step on a Webster campus, to come play athletics of our facility upgrades that we've done. And then take a look at how the bathrooms, total rebuild to what they're looking like now. And then the main office, and what it's become, kind of gets you a flavor. And then here is the brickwork that Schrader Foundation Repair. You can see the brick was falling apart, so we now have resealed that. And you'll see, we're probably going to be doing some more of this, because as we pulled back, we saw, the building's pretty, you know, it's been around for a few years, starting to show some wear and tear. So this is where, I think, if we have some money left over at the end of the project, we'll want to look to rebid and do some more of this work around the outside of the building. Especially on the ceiling, the water mitigation was determined that could be one of the major issues. And finally, we have a design update. And I just want to take you through, I'll try to zoom in here to see if you blow it up a little bit bigger. So this is the original design that we proposed in 2018 as part of the bus garage. You see right here in the middle, this is all certified wetland. So we had a design around the wetland. So we had, besides getting SED to approve this, we needed the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers to also sign off on this part of the project, not just state-owned, because of this wetland area. So when they came out, and you also know, there's a small piece here on the southern edge of the property as well, that was considered wetland. So they came out as part of the approval to investigate and look at it. And we hadn't heard from them, a lot of back and forth, trying to get somebody at the DEC to answer. And then it was during the shutdown, so wasn't great. But when they came out, they were like, very curious about the new build on Abigail Way to the south, and the impact that that had on our project. Because water from this area flows south to north. So from that property towards ours. And so what ended up happening is, the water was diverted. So they had found as part of their testing that that would no longer be wetlands. It's actually cut off from its water supply. So they told us, it's no longer designated federal wetland area, and you are free to do with that space that you want. So you can see, it's quite difficult to maneuver buses around this weird shape right in the middle. We were doing our best attempt. We do it right now. But it's not as efficient as possible. So part of the delay in this is, we went back to the drawing board, and worked with the transportation folks, worked with SED about our initial submission, now that we had this information, and kind of redesigned what we're doing over there. So right off the bat, you can see, we had fuel tanks up front. We've now moved them to the back corner, away from any kind of major traffic in or out. So our storage of fuel is more secure in the back, along with our fuel pumps. It's away from the main thoroughfare. Where it was, this is where it was sitting now, it was by the main thoroughfare. We have moved it back here. It frees up some more space. We've also tremendously upgraded our parking. Everybody that's aware, every winter, we offer a shuttle. Because once the snowbanks pile up, we lose parking space. We shuttle drivers in the morning, either from Willink or from Schrader. They park over there. We shuttle back and forth. It's not ideal. We won't have to do this anymore with this new design. Plenty of parking for all the staff, and plenty of parking for all of our buses, both for the mini buses and the large buses. A lot safer, a lot better lighting, 10 times better than we could have ever imagined. Well worth the wait, I think, in the end of, when the DEC gave us that clearance and go-ahead. So right now, we're working on that schedule. We're going to be bidding that out shortly in the next couple of months. So huge design update, but one that's going to be beneficial for years to come for us. And then the last thing I just want to, you know, throw out there, and I'm going to work with Cindy, to shoot some times out, perhaps for everybody to do a walking tour. We have done that in the past. Looking maybe perhaps around New Year's, if anybody's around. So you could really get into some of the areas of the buildings when it's unoccupied to students and staff. So that's something to be on the lookout for in the next coming weeks. Could try to schedule that for you guys as well. Questions on the capital project?
So are there any financial impacts that are going to be as a result of the material delays and the delay in the projects?
We haven't seen any on the bid side. This transportation one will be, I think, a telling when we do that, because of how much more asphalt. But we think we saved money on the design, because they don't have to work around anything. So we might save on the labor side for, when that comes through, versus that could offset any material costs when we go to bid.
Okay. Yeah, especially because when some of these projects were approved, costs were very different at that time than they are now. Yeah?
We've lived some huge swings from when we actually did the spry bid for that new cafeteria, and how much over that came in. And then just 18 months later, how much under when we started building on the Schrader electrical side, what those bids were coming at.
And even to get materials, yeah, because everything's sitting in ports right now.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we have a motion then, please, to accept the capital project review? Oh, I'm sorry. Nope. I apologize. That was information only.
Yep.
Moving on to the treasures report.
So just a very small treasures report for the month of July for you to approve. July's a slow month. Not a lot happening across all of our funds. You know, very minimal activity. We're just doing a lot of purchase orders, not a lot of actual expenses, not a lot of revenue coming in. So very small, brief executive summary for you on the July happenings at the district.
Any questions about the treasures report? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please, to accept the July treasures report? Janice, and a second. By Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is unanimous. Moving on to the external audit. If you would lead us through that.
Sure. My favorite committee just was held last week, is the audit committee. Not trying to pick favorites over policy, but audit is my personal favorite. So I just put together a few slides to try to distill down for everybody of a summation of the 60-page financials, which are also attached for your reference as well. Tom Zuber, our district auditor, went over this with the audit committee. And I just want to highlight a few things for the board, kind of look at our financials, what came out of it, and then the corrective actions of what's going on. So overall, our cash position increased in this audit by about $6.5 million. A lot of that has to do with our bond anticipation note this year. It's a short-term borrowing, which, for the capital project, which isn't done, we've been borrowing against the general fund, but we did a borrowing to help pay some of the bills. And so it increased our overall cash position at the end of the year. And then we have these things called the accrued liabilities. That was reduced, which increased our cash, because all of our contracts are settled, negotiated, so no accrued liabilities from previous years. So those wiped out, which increased our overall cash position. Fund balance is up about $5.4 million. Huge difference between the two fiscal years that Tom wanted to point out, is our reserves, last year, just sitting in the bank with the interest rates, pre, made almost $900,000 in interest. Our reserves last year, just sitting in the bank with the best rates we can get, made just under $30,000. So I wanted to highlight that of a tale of two fiscal years. With the completion of the $43.5 million project, whatever was left over from that, we saw that move into the debt service reserve. Wasn't enough money to do another project, so it just slides over to the debt service reserve. And our total reserves are a little over $30 million, about 16% of the budget. And then two revenue items to highlight as part of our financials, and then two on the expenditure side. We saw sales tax had no drop-off. It actually increased over the previous year. A lot of that has to do with the internet sales tax coming on the books. And one, drive-up pickup orders did not stop the sales tax revenue. So that was extremely surprising when we took a look at greater detail of that. And state aid, two things on the state aid. Based on the project, we did miss the budget to actual, the building aid, because of some delays with the timing. And we did experience an aid take-back on the transportation side. We lost almost $700,000 in state aid on transportation, on what was disallowed. So if you look at it, and all these different fiscal years that we're kind of playing in, 1920, those expenses drive 2020, 21 transportation aid. So the state in 2021 went back and said, you have to disallow some of your expenses from spring of '20. So there's a whole formula this summer we had to work through, and that equated to a take-back of $700,000. So two state aid things that we were a little short on. And then on the expenditure side, though, we did see some savings, because there wasn't sports for a while, not as many sports were running. So we did not have as many extracurricular runs, had some savings there on both transportation costs. And then we did, because we started the last fiscal year thinking the sky was falling, and we were having rolling aid cuts, the spending freeze on non-essential projects and items did have an impact. We were able to save a few dollars there. So those are our financial updates overall. Some of our other funds, we reversed the structural deficit of the school lunch fund, went from a negative $56,000 to a positive $702,000. Main question that came out of the audit, are the free meals here to stay? You know, what's going to happen there? Other impacts on that school lunch program, and the school lunch fund, is minimum wage, the Styrofoam ban. It's a new one. Many of your kids might be coming home telling you, we have different trays at lunch today. And we're just trying out a bunch of different things, because we know effective January 1, the Styrofoam trays are gone. So we're seeing what works. We'll experiment, some red baskets, some paper, seeing what we can get and seeing what works. So bear with us. And then product shortages. I was going down a list of things, chicken poppers, can't get them right now. They're diverting all the wholesale goods over to just general retail, because you've seen what the prices are doing over there. So something on the school lunch side to look at. Then the other funds, our special aid, I'll get into a little bit, loss of some funds there, debt service, increased revenue. And then the capital fund, you'll see on our financial statements, it's running a negative because we haven't done permanent borrowing on the 69.5. So nothing, it's on the financials as a huge negative, but that's why we share money between funds. So the one finding we had on the financial statements was the special aid fund, which is where we house continuing education programs, namely the Wonder Care program. So what Tom Zuber cited us for is because, just like last year, we were cited for having a structural deficit in the food service program, we're cited this year for having a structural deficit in Wonder Care. And the lesson is, don't ever start a new program when seven months in, it shuts down. So, or in the second year, when it has to be completely reinvented. So two things really that went into, why is there a structural deficit? And Tom explained that to the audit committee, but I'll explain that a little bit detailed for you guys here. First year of the program was 1920. We, in March, April, May, and June, were on the, every two weeks, like everybody else was, of two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. But we made a decision as a program, what would make the most sense. And we refunded all those months back to the families, because, you know, financial hardships. So that was an automatic loss for the program right away. But in that spring, as we're enrolling people to return for the next year, planning, setting up our budgets, we dropped the number of expected enrollees into the program, when we set our budget. But we still were completely full with enrollment in that spring. with enrollment in that spring. Fast forward to August, and now we're looking at these different models across the county, and other programs are also, that have similar programs to Wonder Care. We lost over 50% of our enrollment in August. You know, you could budget as conservatively as you want, but there was no recovery from that. Now, we could have looked at it from a business decision and started closing down schools that had low enrollment. We didn't want to do that to the families. We had committed to that, so we ran probably operating costs higher than what you would do in the private sector. We, our losses were probably no different than anybody else. The only difference is, is they've had years of a program to build up and have a buffer. This program hasn't had a buffer. So what does this do? It's a negative in our books. It has no impact whatsoever because it sits separate, and we'll just start chipping away at that year to year. And all the auditors are looking for is us to chip away at that. Just like what we did with the food service, we've had structural deficits before. We chip away and look to recover. So we're going to do some things, you know, knock on wood, this is year three, that we don't have to experience anything else major, but, you know, we've put some things in plan and in motion when we set up this budget for this year as well. So that's the one citation on this audit. Other than that, everything came out crystal clear. We actually had two things that we solved from last year, was erasing the school lunch structural deficit. That was one thing they applauded us for. And then correctly recording the prepayments was something we were cited for last year, too. And then our upcoming audits, just to put on your horizon, the next fund audit committee will be in January. Federal audit looks at all of our federally funded programs, you'll see that. Our extra classroom audit, it's all the secondary school building accounts. And then our internal audit. So we have three more audits coming up for the district that we'll be working through. Questions, comments on any of the financials or anything? This is, I try to just, you know, distill down those 68 pages into a quick few slides for you. But please feel free, anything, any of the acronyms they use in there, GASB, OPEB, all the fun accounting terms, please let me know.
I have a brief question. In comparison to last year, did this year's Wonder Care enrollment numbers match the year?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're-
Exceeded?
Full, yes, full capacity.
Okay.
We're around, you know, full capacity is around 700 students. And we're, you know, last year, we were 700 enrolled in the spring, and we ended up with probably close to three, 300. So we lost almost 400 kids with the schedule change.
Yeah. That was the exact question I was going to ask.
Yeah, that is a revenue hit we could not recover from.
Any other questions about the audit? Okay, can we have a motion then, please, to accept the audit report? By Mike, second by Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Moving on to the NISBA conference registration. New York State School Board Association hosts a conference every April, and last year, we gave up our membership, mainly with COVID restrictions. We wouldn't be able to really reap the benefit of it, and it did save the district some money. So there won't be any action there, and we won't need to register. So hopefully, all that resumes, and we can revisit that at a later date. Following is the New York State School Board Association Resolution Kit. I think everybody, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review the individual resolutions, but we will, I will act as a delegate on behalf of the board and everyone's preferences about how we act to support or not support any particular resolution. And I attended a brief virtual meeting to make sure that people knew how to sign on and how to vote and how to be recognized by the chair. Excuse me. So we have some time, that's October 18. We have a little bit of time. If anybody wants to review and has any feelings that they want to communicate about any particular resolution, I'm happy to take that into consideration. And I guess we can have a motion then to accept the actions associated with the virtual meeting, and myself serving as the delegate to the New York State School Board Association Conference. Jen, in a second. Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the amended visitor speaking policy. There were a couple items in the policy and in the changes that we made that we wanted to update, one of them being the length of time. So we changed from three to five minutes to three to four minutes, and then that allows, on the end of the meeting, more individual speakers. So it became difficult to schedule speakers, given the timeframe that was allotted. For example, if there were only six speakers for five minutes each, we now make room for several more. So there was a subcommittee that met to review that, as well as those of us who initially worked on it. So any discussion, consideration? Okay. Then seeing none, can we have a motion, please, to accept the changes to the visitor speaking policy? Janice, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to our board reports. We begin with the school liaison reports, and we all serve as liaisons to each of the 11 schools, so we can just move around the room and update on. Most PTSA's have had an opportunity to meet by now, even though they may not be monthly, and are almost, I believe, all are Google or Zoom, but it encourages a lot of participation. So Shannon, okay?
No, Jen, you and Jen did.
Yeah.
So I actually attended two meetings this year, so far. I've done State Road and then Clem North. Actually, State Road is meeting tonight, so I just reached out to their chair to see if there's anything they wanted me to share specifically tonight. We'll follow up next time. But just kind of looking back a little bit, they're currently working on a proposal to create an outdoor classroom that teachers can utilize throughout the year with their classes. And it's really nice because the PTSA is actually surveying the teachers to make sure that they're choosing, you know, resources, materials, and a setup that would be most conducive to learning for the teachers themselves. So it's a great collaborative event. They had their party in the playground, as you guys saw earlier, where kids and families were able to come. They got pizza and chips for purchase for families. Each child got a free treat, and then they also sold ice cream to help raise money for the fifth grade events. And then they're also working on a fundraiser to sell pies through Special Touch Bakery. They're working on a trunk or treat event, and their Fall Book Fair, as well as the Spiritware Sale. And they're beginning the process of creating their yearbook. And like I said, their next meeting is November 8, so hopefully we can get in touch then. Also looking at Clem North, they're actually doing a lot. Some of the past events that they've held, they had a Welcome Back Breakfast, which was highly appreciated by staff. The Clem North principal shared that they're really focusing on recognizing students in different facets for, you know, by getting care cash, for busting students, for doing the right thing, awarding their star awards, and really promoting students and engaging in those positive behaviors. Because, as was mentioned earlier, some, we're relearning some of these how-to-be-in-school strategies and how to deal with some of the social, emotional things that come with that. So they're really working on the positive reinforcement. Teachers are feeling good, and they're glad that they're back to school full-time and with as much normalcy as possible. Mask wearing is going well, but teachers want to remind families that to pack a couple extra masks in case kids get messy. They're also looking forward to parent conferences and touching base with families in person, virtually, or on the phone, in whatever way that works best for families. Some events that are coming up is, the chair did an excellent job of explaining what PTSA is to new members and families. I was very impressed by how inclusive their meeting was and how open for discussion. And then just reminding families that whatever events Clem North has, we'll have to follow New York State and CDC guidelines. So most of those will be outside. As far as Clem North completing, they've completed four restaurant fundraisers. They've had several kindergarten playdates. One thing that is new to Clem North is actually, they actually have a diversity and inclusion rep this year, and that person is working with the school and their, the fire committee, and also their North, Clem North Equity Team, to really collaborate between all of those organizations to make sure that those needs are being met in the school. Clem North is also doing, working on Spiritware orders and possibly creating an on-hand Spiritware store, so families can buy things as they want to. They'll always be available. Working on a trunk or treat event on the 30th. Something interesting, they also developed like an opt-out fundraiser, which allows parents to kind of donate money to help pay for things if they don't have the ability to donate their time. So they're giving families a lot of options to stay engaged. If they can't be in person, they offer financial support. If they prefer to be in person, then it also alleviates the need for financial support. And lastly, they're still looking for volunteers for things like fundraising chair, square one art coordinator, and ideas for events that they can continue to do, knowing that some of these are still on hold because of COVID regulations for safety. And their next meeting is on November 17 at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you.
I attended the Spry PTSA meeting, which was held on September 21. They actually have more members showing up to these meetings because they're on Zoom, so it is pretty awesome, the attendance. The leadership at PTSA at Spry this year is new, so they haven't had a lot of time to work together yet, but they are very busy trying to plan some activities for the year. One of the activities that they hosted at the beginning of the school year, they worked with the leadership in the school and had a back-to-school social in the parking lot. They served pizza, popcorn, nachos, had dancing and music for all to enjoy. It was a perfect Friday night, so it was awesome to see all the students back together, having a good time, and families engaging. They are looking into considering hosting a Winter Olympics this winter for all the students to take advantage of some of the snow. Spiritware sales will begin as soon as the Warrior logo rebranding is complete, which I believe will be anytime now. Tomorrow night is the Schrader PTSA meeting, so I will find out more information on that, and that will be their first meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. I attended Schlegel Patriot Day. There were hundreds of people. There were so many families. They had live music and dancing and all on the school grounds, and it was an excellent way to start out the year. Maybe it was the same Friday night. It was a beautiful night. They're planning trunk or treat for this Friday, which it sounds like almost all the schools are. Clem North, I agree. Jen, they did a great job talking about the overview of PTSA, what the role and function was, and trying to be as inviting as possible. The next meeting is November 17 at 6:00 PM. Thomas, I attended the Thomas meeting as well. They had an excellent executive committee who led the meeting and talked about apparel and PTSA membership. For all those who don't have their PTSA membership yet, it's incredibly important to support this organization and all the good work they do for all the students in our schools. And that's it. Thank you.
Clem South, as we saw earlier in Mr. Bodensteiner's presentation, had a great turnout for their Welcome Back Fun Run. Chutes donated apples, and Fleet Feet provided the finish line, how we say that. The PTSA was extremely grateful for both companies. They also had over 20 Schrader and Thomas volunteers who helped with the setup, the takedown, and making sure the children were safe and having fun along the route. Coming up, they also have trunk or treat. Their is on October 22. Families are looking forward to having some Halloween fun again. And again, they're excited because nearly 20 Schrader and Thomas students have already volunteered to sign up to help with that. And their next meeting is November 7.
At DeWitt, care lessons have already begun in every classroom. Principal Schickel expressed pride and excitement at the PTSA meeting welcoming the UPK program, which has already had a positive impact in the school. Red Ribbon Week theme is tying in healthy life choices. And the DeWitt Dash was held on October 1 and was a huge success once again. It was incredible seeing every student running for health, for fun, and for their school. The DeWitt Road PTSA provided a team T-shirt for every child, free of charge, with every grade level having its own representative color, which all students wore proudly. This is the one and only fundraiser held every year, and every student is involved and included in Spirit Week, the in-class character building program with the Dash as the culminating event. Students worked together as grade-level teams and as one giant DeWitt Road panda team. It was an exciting, fun, and team-building morning. And just want to express my congratulations on behalf of the board to DeWitt Road students, staff, and the PTSA, and parents. There are also PTSA positions still need to be filled, as well as many opportunities for volunteering. At Plank South, Mrs. Sullivan thanked everyone for pulling together to make things run so seamlessly for kids, which always helps to meet the kids' needs. The summer social that was held before school was a huge success. Over 200 families attended the tour and/or the ice cream social that was sponsored by PTSA. Trunk or Treat will be held on Saturday, December, I'm sorry, October 24, rain or shine, in the parking lots, in partnership with Plank North. Parents will be able to begin setting up at 2:30, and families may decorate their vehicles and provide their own candy treats for the kids. Here, too, there are also many PTSA positions that need to be filled, as well as volunteer opportunities. Please contact, in all schools, the central PTSA or the chairperson of the PTSA at the buildings. Plank South staff is working together to provide common and positive experiences around care, essential skills, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and opportunities for creating unity projects, which are being worked on. Buddy classes will be able to work on social skills through buddy reading and social time. It's been a fun few weeks for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Mike?
Plank Road North, there's nobody more excited than Mr. Bodensteiner for the start of school.
That's true.
And to make it special, the parents and the students organized a chalk-to-walk, or chalk-to-walk. And so with chalk, they did pictures and images and welcoming, and it just blew away the teachers and the staff to make opening day very special. And they were off to a great start. The only hiccup they had, which I think a number of districts or schools did, was transportation. And it seems like a lot more parents were dropping off their students, which tended to clog up the in-and-out for the buses a little bit. Wasn't as bad at pickup, but that was the only learning opportunity. It took them about a week to get that sorted out with the help of the whole Transportation Department. So, Brian, they did a great job working on that. The other thing they did to cope with COVID, they couldn't do a live assembly, so they did a remote through Google Live, which was titled "Being Nice to All." So I think that was really special, that they did that in the school with the parents. And then they did school pictures as normal, maskless, so be one for everybody to remember during COVID. And then last but not least, I think one of their clever ideas for fundraising is using Nickelback, which is a recycling center on Empire Boulevard near the theater. And any family member can take the recycle there, just put Plank Road North on there, and the school, or the PTSA gets credit. So novel way to try and get some money. Because they did say that membership is lagging their goal in past years. That's Plank Road North.
Thank you. And-
Can I just give a shout out to all of the teachers, the principals, who have really put in the extra time and effort to help the PTSA with these events? Because kind of restarting again after COVID was a bit of a challenge because we have certain restrictions. But I mean, even at Clem South, for example, like we had teachers that morning helping to run the warm-ups. The principal has been so open and helpful in helping, you know, setting things up, getting things organized. So PTSA can't do what we do without the support of the teachers and the staff of the building. So I just want to say thank you to all of those people who are involved in that process every day, because we can't run our committees without them. So thank you.
And I just want to add, the marching band, Autumn Fanfare, was really great. And again, Building and Grounds did a great job setting up, and they were helpful for PTSA. They, you know, put a table outside for them to sell. But it was also great just to see everybody there for the first time, all the different schools competing. It was, they had- had a senior night for the seniors to come up and have an opportunity to talk about the fact that they'd been a marching band for six years, and it was their last year. And so it was really special. They had their families there, and I just want to say that they did such a good job with that. So, thank you for, I'm so happy that Building and Grounds did such a great job with it. Marching Band did such a great job. It was great to see the schools together, great to see seniors be able to get acknowledged. So, they did fantastic.
Agreed. It was such a pellow machine. The whole night was beautiful.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on to Monroe County School Board Association, the Steering Committee. There are a couple changes in leadership that will be headed toward Monroe County, but all of the districts are well-represented, as well as all the committees. Act for Education is a committee. All their publicity is done for free through Cause Wave, and they highlight all the great things that are happening in public education, and highlight different businesses and their partnerships with different districts, and it's all meant to elevate not only students, but the accomplishments of all the districts across Monroe County. The community, that the Committee on Communication offers talking points for boards across the district in terms of different issues and challenges that come up. So, every committee is underway and working. For Information Exchange, the past presentation was from the Rochester Technology Manufacturing Association, and they have some pretty incredible programs for students, and they're available through the counseling offices if kids wanted to inquire about that. Tomorrow is also an Information Exchange Committee meeting, and Bavona Child Advocacy Center is presenting, so I'm sure that will be very well-attended. They do incredible work for our area, and we're incredibly grateful for their efforts. And Labor Relations, or I'm sorry, Legislative Committee, Jen and Shanna.
Yeah. So, we had our second meeting for legislative, kind of talking about the same topics that we have been talking about, foundation aid, ensuring that we receive the full foundation aid. There has been a lot of talk about transportation advocacy. So, the Monroe County School Boards Association met with Assemblyman Harry Bronson to discuss some transportation advocacy that they're looking for. They also drafted a letter and sent it to Governor Hochul. So, some of the things that they're looking for is advocating for reduction in licensing requirements, like we've talked about in the past. So, not as many requirements for the CDL licensing, increasing staffing and prioritizing the license processing for getting those licenses. Wage considerations is something that they are talking about at length. Some of the challenges that we have to bringing, you know, for transportation is, A, we really need to bring people into the field, because we are competing so much right now. We're competing with the, like, long-distance truck drivers. They're also having a shortage right now, so it's the same pool that they're looking for. A lot of the wages are comparable to other industries. So, we're not just competing against for bus drivers, but they can go into different areas, like Dunkin' Donuts. Our wages are now getting near the same, so that's a big challenge. And so, with competing and having those shortages, it's been a big, it's a big concern where it was already a shortage. So, you know, it's going to be looking at, obviously, we know how important bus drivers are, and it's going to be on us to really look at how we can retain our bus drivers, looking at our benefits. We'd obviously, you know, need to bring people into the field and how they do that. So, it's a big focus across Monroe County, something that we have to consider. We know how much our bus drivers mean to us, so we know not only retaining, but bringing new bus drivers in is going to be a huge challenge. They've been setting up Zoom sessions with some of their legislators since we can't do the in-person. And then the other thing they talked about is the TikTok, is the TikTok challenge. So, they've been talking with local legislators to make sure that they're aware that they, because they're looking for some kind of, you know, looking at this platform as a way where they're spreading and giving heightened, you know, awareness to the fact that they're, you know, spreading this throughout, and it's causing an issue for a lot of the districts. So, that's one thing that they wanted to make sure that they were communicating. And some issues are not so much, I think, our issues, like receivership, making sure that when they talk about students being absent for COVID, you know, if they're logging into their Google Classroom, can that count as that they attended for that day? Because it's a big concern as there is a, it's not easy right now to get rapid PCR tests, and so students are out. At least, my son was out three days alone before I could get a test result back. So, as we look at absenteeism, you know, what can we do to help those kids that are, because we have a shortage for the test, because it's taking so long, how do we, you know, take care of absenteeism with them? So, and I don't know, Brian, how much, how much of an impact it's been in Webster. I just know, like, from my own experience, like, that it's been, and then one day, you can't get a test, and then the next day, you can. Like, I've seen rapid, people are getting them.
We're working with the county on that. The superintendent's met today with Dr. Mendoza, and we're actually working, we're trying to see if we can do some of that work here in our district, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of components, a lot of moving parts to that. So, but we're trying, and the conversation is definitely happening. And thanks to Erin, who is our COVID coordinator, and she's working really closely with them as well, and our nurses.
Yeah.
And our staff, and trying to see if, what can we handle?
Mm-hmm.
What can we do here as far as that goes?
Yeah. And on the legislative side, they are talking to, you know, Dr. Mendoza on a regular basis to try to understand, you know, is there, even for the testing, is there an avenue for reimbursement and letting him know that we need to have the tests available in order to support our students? And so I know that they're working on that. They were waiting on getting funding from state and federal before they were buying tests. So, just continues to be something that all school districts are looking at.
Yeah, the conversation's helping. It is. We're seeing actions already.
Good. Awesome.
Hopefully more to come.
One other thing they discussed was really looking at how to educate our communities about what federal foundation actually is, and how it affects, how the impacts are going to be felt, short-term and long-term. Because eventually, it will run out, so we want to make sure that, they're trying to make sure that communities understand, when it runs out, what does that mean? What will it look like? And how will it impact each of our districts? So, just kind of educating the community on what that is and what happens when it's gone.
Great point. Yeah, because the aid that's coming in, that's supposed to be assisting with class size and things like that, it's a one-time shot. And it's really important for parents to understand that, that money, when it comes in, you have to put it towards something that's not going to create a continuous expense every year, because that funding is not going to be there. So, we can't just bring in tons of teachers and create tons of classrooms, because that's only a one-time shot in there. So, it's important to understand that.
It is. It's important to plan. That's why I know that's been keeping Mr. Freeman very busy.
Yes.
In Information Exchange, I did just report, Executive Committee. We attended the Executive Committee meeting, and every district is facing the same challenges, and the benefit of Monroe County is that we have that local support and local relationships, especially among the superintendents, to help boards navigate some of the challenges that we're facing right now. Moving on to our standing district committees, Audit Committee, you know, we heard a little bit about.
Audit, yeah. I would say, Brian, you really gave the update that I was going to give in a way better format. So, I mean, that was, that was the update on Audit, and so, thank you, Brian.
Number one.
The competition lives. Yes. Policy Committee, Linda, Janice, Maria?
We're, we're still number one.
Okay.
Right, Janice? There's two of us right here. We are still awaiting. I know Erie One has...
Erie One is doing the audit.
Erie One's doing the audit right now. It's going to be a couple months. They have all of our policies, and they're looking through it, and they're going to get back to us once they're done with that.
Excellent. That's our report.
Yep.
Okay. And Budget Advisory, before we know it.
Yeah, we just started this year. Couple months away.
Strategic Planning, Mike, do you want to talk about? Sure.
Happy to. We met again, and we have another meeting in a couple of weeks. We went through, trying to put together our key measures for our three goals of academic program and student achievement, being one, climate and culture, being the other, and then operations and budget, which Brian covers very well, being the third. And there's a whole bunch of measures that we look at on an ongoing basis, and far too many to take action on, but many of these are already at a high and steady rate, so we're going to continue to track those. And then we're going to look for the opportunities in each one of these areas where one that we think is maybe lagging a little bit behind, benchmarks against other districts in the county, or other reasons that we want to improve those. And so, Brian and his team is now taking a look, a deeper dive into those, and will share it with us at the next meeting. But I think we're off to a good start on trying to get some of this put together. We're taking some of the approaches that are used in business and kind of apply those to a school district. So, kind of meld the best of both worlds, and the team has been great working with us. So, that's where we stand.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to School Community Committees, Wen, we have Linda and Maria.
So, Wen's next meeting will be tomorrow, another virtual meeting. Just some information, Red Ribbon Week is October 23rd through the 31st, and Wen's Director of Communication and Marketing, Jen DeGrace, has worked tirelessly with a group of volunteers to create pages on the webpage that are only dedicated to that week. I encourage people to go onto the website and look at it. They have activities for the three different age groups, for elementary, middle school, and high school. And there's tabs. There are videos to watch. There are word searches, coloring pages. There's a whole library of books that students can look for. The activity is mostly focused on positive, healthy lifestyles, coping with stress and anxiety. The information was given to all principals, to health teachers, and to the mental health professionals in our district. So, it's a great tool, and I can't thank Jen enough for working so hard on that. Also, part of Red Ribbon Week on October 23rd at the wastewater treatment plant from 10:00 AM to 2:00, there will be a Drug Takeback Day. Those days have been very, very successful in our community. Many of them have taken over 450 pounds of drugs off of our streets, out of our cabinets. So, look for that. And if you have anything in your cupboards, you can clean them out, and I'll give the next report next month.
Excellent. Thank you. Fire Committee. We know there's kind of a reorganization going on where FIRE is a little bit more independent, and as such, has changed their parent organizing emails. So, we look forward to having more information at the next meeting, and potentially to have an update to share as well.
And their most recent meeting, they actually invited candidates for local positions at Webster to speak regarding their platforms or perspectives, and FIRE participants were able to ask questions, which was helpful to really promote voter education, voter awareness. And then, one piece that FIRE is looking to do is really collaborate more with the district through the PTSAs, through parent outreach, parent education, so that they can really educate people on what FIRE is meant to do and what their work is going to be about. So, it's really a chance to make those connections and to work together with the district. So...
Excellent. Thank you. And now, moving on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of minutes, personnel actions, appointments, resignations, recommendations on the Committee on Special Education Meetings, and annual review meetings. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
By Janice, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And moving on to our visitor speaking portion of the evening, we have three speakers who have registered to speak, to address the board this evening. Lisa, would you like to announce the speakers?
First speaker, Lauren West.
Hi.
Thank you.
I hope we're starting with the four-minute thing next time. Or no, you're starting it now. Okay. I'm thrilled that we're working towards goals related to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our school district. However, we need to be thoughtful about how to proceed. Are we fully integrating these concepts into every aspect of the campus culture and structure? Not just curriculum and celebrations, but also discipline, classroom management, community engagement, hierarchies, and group dynamics, both in and out of the classroom? The DEI work doesn't stop at book reports or culture fairs. It must be the lens through which we view everything. It is difficult to appreciate how all of our systems are steeped in discrimination when we live inside them, and especially for those of us who benefit from the status quo. It is a feat of cognitive flexibility and bold risk-taking in order to view the world from outside the walls in which we are raised. It is like an optical illusion, hard to see at first, but once the image shifts, your perspective is forever changed. It is hard, but we must do it. So, how? I'll bring you two points. First, we must change our perspective, our personal paradigms by appreciating culture on all levels. In culturally responsive teaching in the brain, Zaretta Hammond offers descriptors of culture that fall into three tiers. Surface culture, which is all the fun components, clothing, music, food, celebrations, what we would share at a culture fair is readily explored. The next level is shallow culture, which consists of unspoken rules about everyday society and interactions. This can be a challenging tier to navigate, however, it appears as if people are more open to considering these kinds of differences when explicitly discussed. Tension exists, but there is a level of awareness growing. The final tier is deep culture. This is the one where we are consistently and woefully failing. It is very difficult to address and explore, because these components are so deeply ingrained in our upbringing that we often see them as infallible truths rather than varied components of culture. We see them as the right way to do things versus wrong. We view differences as uncomfortable and hard to explain, then use them unconsciously to frame our assessment of other people, adding value judgments to things that are truly neutral. This deep culture consists of the unconscious assumptions that govern our worldview, including ethics, health, education, government. It is the organizational system for our brain. As the author says, it is the software for our hardware. In lieu of the typical iceberg metaphor, she uses a tree visual, where the surface culture are the leaves and fruits, the shallow are the branches and trunk, all dynamic and changing. The deep culture is represented by the roots, durable, sustaining, the foundation to identity, group dynamics, and decision-making. We must address and reflect on these deep cultural issues in order to be successful. The next step is that we ensure that everyone is represented at the design table. Look around the table and room. We aren't there yet, not even close. It is insufficient and harmful for those of us with privilege to participate in DEI work without leadership from those in marginalized communities. It is the job of those of us with power to dismantle oppressive systems, but we must be led by those who have the lived experiences of harm within those systems in order to be successful. There's a saying, nothing for us without us. It is crucial that we create an environment that doesn't merely tolerate, but welcomes underrepresented groups and creates safe opportunities for them to participate. However, we cannot rely on the free labor of the community members with these identities to do the work. We must hire and pay people who have the expertise from life to lead this mission, people whose identities represent the full range of human experiences. We must be intentional in creating diversity where there is none in order to be successful. Without using this framework to explore all aspects of the district, without ensuring we have staff from underrepresented groups, without clearly and consistently creating environments where everyone feels safe to participate, it's all lip service. I don't want people to walk into this town, these schools, this meeting, to feel unwelcome and othered as if they don't belong. Disenfranchisement keeps people away, and it is born from subtle rejection as well as overt refusal to listen and change. For those who are Black, Indigenous, people of color, refugees, queer, disabled, immune-compromised, neurodiverse, we must tell them with our actions, this is your town, this is your district, this is your community, too. If our goal is creating successful students, they must be educated in an environment where seeking justice is a constant process, where we look for answers in the right places, and where we are brave enough to challenge our deeply ingrained perceptions to always do better. Every single one of us has work to do. It is our civic duty and ethical obligation as humans to do better. Nothing for us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have David Ruiz.
The thing's set, but are we sticking to the four? Because I didn't, we just changed it tonight. Is that all right?
Could you, I'm sorry, can you keep it to four?
No. I timed it three times.
I see.
It's a little more. Okay. Good evening, School Board. Good evening, administrators. I strongly disagree with the one-size-fits-all or the systemic application, especially in terms of dealing with racism. Not all whites were nor are racist. For example, we've had more abolitionists at one time than we did slave owners. But yes, let's teach a balanced history on this. Let's call an ace an ace and call out racism appropriately or ever found. For example, we do have some supremacists in academics. Darwin, although he was against slavery, ironically has teachings filled with racism. In his book, Descent of Man, he writes that non-whites are intellectually and morally inferior. He justified white European imperialism as survival of the fittest. He used science and biology to show white supremacy. He wrote about exterminate and replace savage races. He places whites as nearest to the angels and blacks closer to the apes on his evolutionary scale. His writings have influenced many who cite his science, like fascism, Marxism, and later in turn influencing BLM and diversity and equity beginnings. We will acknowledge, will we acknowledge this or cancel Darwin out like we did prayer or the Ten Commandments in school? How about Planned Parenthood, who have a respected place of influence in our schools? Its founder, Margaret Sanger, had the Negro Project, which sought on how to exterminate the Negro population through eugenics. Planned Parenthood majors in placing abortion facilities in minority neighborhoods. Planned Parenthood has been accused of paying their Black employees less than whites, with fewer promotions also. In America, a highly disproportionate amount of her abortions are of Black babies. I ask BLMers and Black in the burbs to join us and believe that every Black life matters. Are we going to teach our kids about the party that was the most responsible for racist abuse of the Indians, such as the Trail of Tears? Or the most responsible for promoting slavery and fighting white abolitionists? For supporting segregation and gyncoism and KKK, fighting white reformers? Just say the name, Democrats. How about the injustice of mass incarceration? And the person who wrote the 1994 Crime Bill that really did a lot of that mass incarceration of blacks? And he also characterized urban schools as Black urban jungles, jungles, and said, "If you ain't Black, you ain't Democrat." Let's just say his name, Joe Biden. So are we going to be duplicitous and hypocritical when dealing with our racist history, up to the present even? Are we going to teach fairly across the board, no matter who is called out? Are we only going to cancel out those that don't fit our agenda or worldview? Are we going to ignore warnings of the current one-sided cancel culture even in our schools? Will a teacher or a student be able to wear "Make America Great" clothing just as easily a BLM one? Will a teacher or student be able to wear a Christian message to counterpart the wearing of a rainbow article of clothing? Will a teacher or student be able to wear "Thou shalt not kill in the womb" article as easy as one saying, "My body, my choice"? We are in a struggle, and I am for ending racism. I just disagree with some of the bureaucratic methods and systemic methods. I will quote George Washington, "Reason and experience both forbid us to expect the national morality can prevail in the exclusion of religious principle. Of all the dispositions and habits which lead to political prosperity, religion is an indispensable support." I just want to quickly say, half of the state thrust for this equality, inclusion, and everything had to do with racism that we do have with the police. It also had to, where we are really systemically bad is in our education. Minorities get the raw end of the stick in America, and everybody agrees with that. It would be nice if we could benchmark in our district in Webster. How our minorities are doing right now, are they indeed on equal footing with the whites in this district? Benchmark that, and then see down the road if the policies we're implementing now to make them more comfortable and to hopefully have better academic outcomes. Will we have data to show that minorities are benefiting from this program? And let's face it, what we're doing here and what the state is proposing will do nothing, in my opinion, to help out the poor city school districts and the inequality that lies there. God bless us in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have one more speaker.
Just to check, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. First, I just want to say Proverbs 22:6 says, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old he will not depart from it." In order to train up a child to be kind, generous, accepting, and the many traits to make their life successful, we first need to understand the developmental stages children go through from birth until adulthood. In the case of our schools, we need to understand the basics of these stages from about age three, four to 18. I'm not going to go into a discourse about child development, but all educators and most of you around the table have children, and you have seen how children grow and the stages of their life. I believe we observe their physical, emotional, social needs of our kids because we love them, right? So our children belong to their parents, and the school is a place of trust to support their learning, not to educate them, to support their learning. Harvard University studies show children's brains from age birth to three are rapidly growing and making millions of neural connections every minute. These links become the brain's mapping system by combining nature and nurture, especially what they call this, what is called serve-and-return interactions. For example, a baby crying, a parent will come in comfort or change their diaper, and that is a serve-and-return connection or interaction. As children grow, these interactions change. Parents will play with their kids, they will sing, they will calm their anxieties and Life stressors such as financial worries, relationship struggles, and health or illness can severely impact a child's development, as well as these connections. Consider then, this continual masking of COVID, yet colds, bronchitis, stomach bugs, and RSV is up and more rampant in our community right now. I wonder, is the mask working only for COVID? Or is this child abuse? Children between seven to 16 go through what most people comprehend as the formative years. And this is from the American Academy of Pediatrics. Children gain self-esteem, identity, and experience physical changes, as well as develop interests and abilities that can last a lifetime. As students go through these stages, school is an appointment partner, along with the family and community, to provide the appropriate activities. By age 14 to 16, parent-child conflict typically peak. Those of you of teenagers know what I'm talking about. This age group also spends more time and energy on their outward appearance, but they still have a hard time seeing long-term implications of their actions, which can lead to risky behaviors and sex. I want you to remember that part. They have a hard time seeing the long-term implications. Remember, serve-and-return interactions of our younger kids. Knowing this, as educators and parents, I'm appalled and grieved by the culture shift and sweeping educational reform to raise up our children, not in the way that they should go within our community and country with pure minds and hearts, but by those in front of me, several of those behind me, and the communist agenda of our country that has decided to take what we know about child development and their agenda to train our children's brains into something that violates family and Christian values and beliefs. What we have seen over the last two years, and even more so since the start of school, has been inappropriate, morally wrong, sinful, and it will dismantle the family and one's faith in God. I just have to have this one last thing. Currently, there are several books in our school libraries, as well as Monroe County. Some of you may have seen these videos on the internet. The books are Gender Queer, Lawn Boy, and George. They are in our buildings. This is child abuse, this is pornography, this is pedophilia, and the graphics. I did not bring the graphics with me, as those other parents have, because I respect that each one of you know what is in these books. So I am asking you to remove them immediately from our libraries. You are setting up our kids for sexual implications, as well as it's against the law. So one ask, do this before I have to go to Sheriff Baxter and to a lawyer. This is against the law. Genesis.
Thank you.
Remember, evil always loses and God wins.
And that concludes our visitor speaking time this evening. Can we have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Janice, second by Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a good evening.